Oh, because it's already 3:46. You're supposed to have that done by now.
(laughing)
Here.
Moore.
Scott.
Mr. Moore.
Aye, here.
Waters.
Here.
Yep.
Jim, you gotta watch out some here.
Second.
And we're going to close session of the City Council to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the city would have to pay for that property, reduce the price of property that the city would receive for that property.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capers?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Good enough.
Good enough.
Done.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Move we adjourn the closed session?
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Call the roll on the regular meeting, please.
Waters.
Here.
Capron.
Here.
Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please? You know? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pat and Robin Nelson, please come to the podium.
Hey, Mayor.
Oh.
I mean, um.
We should re-.
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
We have a commendation, whereas you are to be commended for taking the time, the initiative and the effort to create a beautiful yard that contributes greatly to your neighborhood and to the city of Sioux City. Whereas you should be proud of the work you've done and the beauty you've created, and whereas we thank you for allowing our citizens to enjoy your beautiful yard and for teaching by example the merits of beautification in the community. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the city of Sioux City, Iowa, and behalf of the city council, do hereby commend Pat and Robin Nelson for exhibiting pride of ownership and being named the recipient of the Sioux City's Yard of the Month Award. I should present this to you.
Thank you.
And say a few words, and then Jim will have a few words for you.
Well, eight years ago, we took a flyer on a red-tagged house that was on the condemned list and put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into it, and we're really proud of what we have now.
Thank you, it's beautiful. Thank you.
Nice yard and saved the house.
When's the barbecue?
Yeah, when's the barbecue?
You guys always want a barbecue.
Yeah.
What's the asking of ordering?
On behalf of the Sioux City Yard of the Month Committee, I'd like to congratulate you, and I think presents this check from the Neighborhood, the Sioux City Neighborhood Network. And a red tag save, I think that's great.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what, that's what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to the consent agenda, which today is items two through fourteen F. You can consider them passed unanimously unless a council member asks for a vote. You want to speak on any item on the, not on the agenda, come up at the end or citizen concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of the city council minutes of August fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Three is a resolution appointing Rex M. Mueller as police chief. Bob, would you like to say anything, or you've already said it?
We said it. Congrats.
Congratulations, Rex.
Yep.
Four is a motion.
Hey.
Four is a motion accepting approving the Civil Service Commission two thousand seventeen annual report. Five is a resolution assessing a fifteen hundred dollar civil penalty and thirty day suspension of the liquor permit for Sam's Mini Martin, nine twenty-three West Seventh for violation of the Iowa beer, wine and liquor laws. Six is a resolution authorizing final payment to Subserco for the water main replacement project I need to abstain. Seven is a resolution amending resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh seven three four by changing the class codes for the winter snow technician and winter recreational attendant positions in the Parks and Rec Department. Eight are actions relating to grant. A is a resolution approving a clean water SRF project application to IDNR to fund the Ravine Park construction design project, and staff will request an amendment on eight A. Who's requesting that?
Mayor and council, Rick Mock, special assistant to city manager. The original heading that had got out to council would have put us under duress as to making the timeline for the submission of the application, so I'd like to change the resolution heading to read resolution authorizing approving the submission of a clean water SRF sponsored project application to the city's bond council for a concurrent letter, and then authorizing the city manager to submit it to the IDNR for the funding. That way we'll be able to stay on the sidetrack, it's my fault on that.
I'll move the amendment. Second. Call the roll, please.
Capron.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
B is a resolution accepting a methamphetamine drug hotspot grant to assist the police department. C is a resolution accepting a grant agreement from the FAA for runway seventeen dash thirty-five reconstruction and shift project at Sioux Gateway Airport. D is a resolution authorizing the airport director to sign a reimbursement agreement with the FAA for runway seventeen thirty-five reconstruction and shift project at Sioux Gateway Airport. Nine are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing portions of Floyd Boulevard and Jefferson Street on September seventh, two thousand seventeen, for the North High School homecoming parade and staging. B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the historic Fourth Street District on September second and third for the Labor Days Country Musical Festival and fundraiser. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to INA Construction for the two thousand seventeen annual CBD ADA sidewalk ramp project, or Phase Two project. B is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Barker and Lemire for the Twenty-Eighth Street landfill post closure monitoring and regulatory assistance. C is a resolution approving amendment two to the consulting services agreement for HR Green for the Bridgeport West Downstream Sewer Improvement Project. D is a resolution approving a subordination agreement with Prime Bank for the Clayton Creek subdivision at seven oh one and eight oh one South Roswell Street.
Mayor and council, the RCA and the resolution will not change related to this matter. However, in the request for a subordination agreement, the original request was to subordinate the development agreement and the promissory note. However, our recommendation is that the council only subordinate the city's position as to the promissory note. So we have revised the agreement with Dan Moore we conferred earlier today, and that was the recommendation that is made to council tonight.
Okay, thank you. E is a resolution approving an agreement with the IDOT for the use of Virginia Court, Dace Floyd as detours for the I twenty-nine Floyd Boulevard East and West Ramp Terminal Project. F, a resolutions approving an agreement with IDOT for the use of the Wesley Parkway Third Pierce in Virginia as detours on the I's and West Ramp Terminal Project. G is a resolution approving an agreement with IDOT for the use of Wesley Parkway Third, Pierce, Court and Dace as detours for the I twenty-nine Floyd Boulevard East and West Ramp Terminal Project.
Mayor.
Yes.
On those items E, F and G of item ten, I've asked the staff to please point out to us on a map the exact detour route. That's agreed to do that. Thank you very much.
Let me just pull them up here for you.
Okay. It's really hard to see anything.
All right, Brittany Anderson, acting city engineer, I just want to go through those three detour routes that we're approving with the IDOT agreements. Item ten E covered Floyd Boulevard closed between the exit ramps. That allows for a detour along Virginia Street, Gordon Drive, Court Street and Dace Avenue, walking you through there. Here's our closure. And then it would detour traffic along here down to Virginia to get you around. And this, we will be maintaining access to the riverfront. There will be specialty signing for the riverfront, still allowing you to take the southbound exit and turn right or detour around and get through Virginia Street.
And that'll be for all of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen?
Yeah, the dates on the agreement cover March of eighteen through December of nineteen. This map is for item ten F. It's the Wesley Parkway, southbound I twenty-nine ramp is closed, shown here. We would then have detours along Wesley Parkway to Third Street, Pierce Street, to Gordon Drive, and then to Virginia Street. And then item ten G covers the Floyd Boulevard closure again for the bridge demolition. So you are not allowed to pass through Floyd Boulevard there. Southbound I twenty-nine traffic is then detoured along Wesley Parkway to Third Street, Pierce Street, Gordon Drive, Court Street and Dace Avenue. And with these agreements, they are the DOT construction projects, so they will manage all of the signage through there.
Okay, thank you.
H is a resolution approving a school trip or service agreement with the Sioux City Community School District for Student Transportation Services.
Mayor, I've got a conflict of interest I need to abstain on H.
I is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement with a sauna climbing for the Long Lines Family Recreation Center Climbing Wall Project. J is a resolution authorizing a release of mortgage with Goldenrod Hills Community Services for one thousand G Street, South Sioux City, under the Home Investment Partnership Program. K is a resolution approving a release and settlement with Joyce Downing. Eleven, actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to lease property at thirty-four oh six Laurel Avenue to Morningside College for parking lot purposes.
I better abstain from that.
What it, why is this different? You do it every year. We don't approve it every year, do we? I just want to make sure you're not sneaking something in there on me that I don't know about.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. The previous agreement expired, so we're doing a renewal. Well, it's not a renewal, it's a new agreement. Very similar to the last agreement.
You what?
It's a, it's a, the last agreement expired, so we had to do a brand new agreement, but it's very similar to the last agreement that was in place.
You get a rate increase?
Yeah, we negotiated a couple trades for use of the parking lot.
That doesn't, trades, like in.
Something we didn't have before.
Football, they don't make any cash. Trades are not really good.
Okay.
It was the use of a couple facilities, right?
We were paying for the use of facilities before, now we're not.
Yeah.
Do we use them during the year?
Yes. We had to pay for them last year, and then we won't have to.
For what kind of activities?
Hershey Track, or it's the local track meet in WSI class? Yes.
Okay. So we're keeping money that we otherwise spent?
Correct.
Matt?
We'll see.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we'll see.
I raise a question with you about the exclusive use during the pool.
Yes.
Swimming pool season. And I wonder if we couldn't just revise that a little bit, so that if we did expand the number of days of operation that we wouldn't have to go and ask for consent, we'd just be able to do that, is the.
I think there's a provision for that already. It said in the event the city is able to extend time when Lewis Pool is open to the public for either open swimming or a special event after August twentieth each year, Lisi agrees to allow patrons to use the pool parking lot. Shall notify the Lisi within, in writing of the extension of the pool operation seasons.
But they have to consent to it.
Correct.
Yeah, my point is, can we do it without the consent, that if, if we want to expand, with all that we've got going on with swimming pools, if we wanted to, for any kind of consent? That, that was my point that I was raising.
Sure.
And I don't know if they'd have a problem with that. You said it's probably unlikely that we would be doing.
We typically close after the first week of August.
If we did that, I mean, because you had what, from May? I can't remember what the dates were now. You had two dates, two outside dates, from one date to the other?
Oh, yeah, it goes till the August, August twentieth.
Nineteenth or twentieth, yeah.
Yeah.
The only, the only reason there would be trouble is because then school does start. So students move in about the date that it's done.
But it would be for maybe a matter of a week or ten day. What I don't want to have happen is that you think it's best that we expand those operating hours, and then we as a city can't do that because we don't have a parking lot for the users to park in. So I'm just asking the question, could we expand?
Yeah, that's right.
Keep the dates that you have in there, but whatever, whatever the city would decide on what the sea, swimming season's going to be, that we would just have the right to do that.
Yeah, we could just change that language to say we would notify them in writing in the event of an extended season.
Can we do that?
Sure. The draft of the proposed lease is on the agenda today just for reference, but it will not actually come back to council for hearing until September eleventh.
Okay.
So we have some time to make that revision and bring it back in final form.
I think the problem is, is that our city lifeguards have to leave before.
That could be an issue.
Before school starts anyway, so it, we probably wouldn't be able to extend it without having lifeguards present.
And I just want to have that flexibility.
Sure, I understand.
Because you don't know who could be lifeguarding and what our situation might be.
You a lifeguard? Because they.
What's that?
Are you a lifeguard?
No, not anymore.
They charge lots of money for this parking.
Just for a week?
Know that, right?
No.
You don't think they're giving the parking to the students, do you? They have parking passes.
They did where I went to school.
And they're making money on it, and they're not going to give that money up. Well, I'm just telling you, it's another thing, you guys can, you can get on me about equalizing things, but I'm telling you, we do a lot more for one college than we do for another in this community, and they're both terribly important to this community. And one of these days, we need to recognize that.
Do we know what they charge for parking for students, just out of curiosity?
Well, I bet.
There's a parking permit.
I did.
Absolutely. It's built in there.
Per parking spot or anything like that.
Exactly, but you're getting money for kids to park on your campus. Absolutely, you are. It's part of the fee when you go in there.
Or they can, yeah, they can park on the street, they can park anywhere.
Yeah, I'm just smiling because I, I thought it was going to be just a simple, I mean, I just wanted a simple request that we have the flexibility.
But you're not going to, is what I'm saying. You're not going to have that flexibility because they charge people to pay to park there.
Okay, so Matt, could you ask them if that's going to be, if that will be an issue?
I will.
I don't want to make it an issue, but if, I just want the flexibility.
Yeah, I'll check with them.
Okay. Good point, though, I didn't, no, I didn't think of that.
When you went to college, did you get to park for free? Because I didn't, and I bet it hasn't changed in those fifty years.
Just rode the horse in.
B is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and accepting the proposal of Salzman and Salzman Management Property at thirty-one oh four Floyd Boulevard.
I need to abstain on that item, I have a conflict of interest.
Preference, Mr. Salzman, would be the Buffalo rather than the Burger King. You'd like our choice. Thank you. Twelve is purchasing, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order Alexander Dennis for one thirty-foot high, heavy duty low floor diesel bus. B is a resolution approving change order number three to the contract with MLS Landscaping for Design. This, you've got this so, I can't read it, but am I reading the whole thing now? Because you took it off, then you say ignore and... I'm just going to read, I hope it's right. For the addition of the storm sewer intake for the promenade improvement project. You got-
Don't read that. They were going to have it deleted and now they're leaving it.
They're leaving it, okay. I thought that, but I-
Just a quick question, and I don't know, Melissa, I just wondered where they were as far as are they on schedule for this project overall? I didn't know if you-
Between the two, the first two change orders, Melissa Campbell, Environmental Services Analyst, between the first two change orders, I believe we've added an additional forty-six days to the project. So we're looking at mid-September.
Mid-September?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Utility equipment for fire hydrant replacements parts through August twentieth, two thousand eighteen. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ed M. Feld Company for urban search and rescue fire equipment. E is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Titan Machinery for one M eight thousand M D Snow Blast snow blower. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list come forward. Fourteen's receipt of minutes, see the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward now. How are we voting today?
Call the roll.
Okay?
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Aye.
Recommendations of the planning and zoning. Fifteen's a hearing in ordinance vacating east-west alley at eighteen oh nine Geneva Street. The petitioner is Hugo Priata Diablo, P and Z recommends approval.
God, they're all leaving us.
I'll move first reading.
I'll second that. You guys don't have to leave.
Yeah, stick around.
Geez.
This was a, the petitioner appeared, indicated that he wanted this alley vacated so he could have the possibility of purchasing it because there's crime in the neighborhood and he wanted to add this to his property if possible. We had no one protesting this or commenting on it in any way. My name is Susan Stewart, I'm the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye. Anybody opposed to second, third?
No.
Nope.
I'll move it.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I'll move second, third now.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Sixteen's a hearing in ordinance vacating the east-west alley at twelve twenty and twelve twenty-eight Cornelia Street. The petitioner is Carol and Brian Pede Place, P and Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
This, this item, or this is an undeveloped alley there. I think that the petitioners appeared, no one else did. I think there, they, they had a tree to remove. It's, it's just a wild kind of forested area, and there was no opposition, and the commission approved it unanimously.
Call the roll, please.
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
I'll move second, third?
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Seventeen's a hearing and resolution concerning the appeal of Paula Hogan from the notice to abate a public nuisance at fourteen oh eight South Hennepin Street.
Mayor and council, I'll just give a little bit of procedural background for purposes of the introduction for the hearing today. On May twenty-second of two thousand and seventeen, city staff sent a notice to abate Ms. Hogan. Time and place for hearing was set. She did require or request an appeal on that finding. Hearing was held in front of a hearing officer on June twentieth of two thousand and seventeen, finding that a nuisance did exist, and the request to abate was continued forward. Ms. Hogan has now requested a hearing in front of the city council, which is outlined in the nuisance chapter of the city code. You are the fact finders for purposes of the hearing today. Ms. Hogan is the appellant. She'll be able to provide her information that she wishes to have the council consider. Then engineering staff, Justin Potter, will be presenting engineering's position related to the fact that they believe that a nuisance does exist. A packet of information has been provided to Ms. Hogan, I believe, by Assistant City Attorney Amber Higerty. Did you receive a copy of the exhibits? This is a packet of information which contains the nuisance chapter, the burden of proof for the council to consider, which is clear and convincing evidence, which means it's more likely or not. That's the burden that you must determine as to whether the, or copies of the letters that were provided outlining the factors for why staff believed there was a nuisance in fact in the property, and the procedural history, including the hearing officer's letter finding that there was a nuisance. If there are no additional questions at this point regarding procedure, I would go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Hogan for her presentation of evidence to the-
Counsel, and Pete and I have been on counsel since, you know, three years ago, three and a half years ago. Have we had a hearing of this nature?
No, this is very rare. We have not had one since my time with the city. However, the procedure in the city code is that it first goes to a hearing officer, and then if an appeal is made, it goes directly to the council.
And once we make a finding, then where's, what's the next appeal?
Then district court would be the next appeal step.
Okay. So we're actually going to hear evidence?
Yes. That's, the council's role today will, to be, to have the hearing and then consider the evidence, and then make a determination. The resolution that has been presented in front of the council indicates just the finding of the underlying hearing officer that a nuisance exists. If the council wishes to amend that, to vote on whether one does not exist, then you have the ability to do that.
Do we, do we have to make the decision today?
The hearing could be closed and a decision rendered at a later date that could be set by the council, or the hearing could be continued to another open session of the city council. However, deliberation must take place in the open forum for the council on this decision rendered publicly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my sixteen-plus years, I've never had one of these either. So this is new territory.
Yeah.
It isn't new to me. This is the fourth one, so it isn't new.
Okay, go ahead.
So, right now, it, this is the fourth time that it has sunk. The first two times, the city had to come out and fix it. The third time is when Justin got involved, and he told me it was my problem, and I had to fix it, otherwise they were going to assess my property, which scared the heck out of me, so I did. And it hasn't been two years, and it's sunk again, and in the same exact spot. I don't know if you have the picture with the tree roots in the sinkhole?
We, we have these pictures.
Do you have this one?
Yes. Yeah, the picture you just got. We've got some in here too, Dan, if you're looking.
So you can see the tree roots are always involved every time this sinks, and they have trees that are on the berm that they do not take care of. There are some dead ones. There's a lot of live ones that hang over my garage, which they told me-
I just interrupted, one second. The clerk needs your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paula Hogan, fourteen oh eight South Hennepin.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So anyway, the trees hang over my garage, which they told me it's an act of God, and I have to take them off. So I have to pay to have that taken care of. So if this is state property, and the rainwater that they say is causing this, that's an act of God. So I don't understand why they think I have to pay for it, especially being the fourth time that it's sunk in the same spot. So, and I've had landscapers come out because Sergeant Hartwell wanted some estimates, and two of the landscapers, one said that there's debris at the bottom of the berm, so it's causing the water to go down into, you know, eroded out. And the other guy said that the pipe going between the two storm drains that are on the state property, there's got to be a leak, because he said it just goes straight down to the, to the bottom of the berm. So he said they need to come and fix the pipe before anything can be filled, he said, because it's going to sink again. And then I did pay, like I said, two, almost two years ago, it'll be two years in October, and it cost me fifty-two hundred dollars. And I don't have sixty-seven hundred dollars to-
To have it filled that one time?
Yes, yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Could, um-
Do you need?
I just want to make sure I get all the facts straight. Is there any way we could put this up on the screen and you could just show?
Yes, I believe-
Because you mentioned state property, you mentioned your property.
Right. Mine is in the pink.
Give us an overview.
Mine is in the pink.
We'll, we'll get it up here.
I mean, maybe you guys understand this better than I do, but I just-
I'd like to walk through it.
It's all kinds of state right away down in there.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, but, but I don't know if we're down or if we're up. I, I don't know where we are as far as the position of the land.
Oh, this screen? I'm glad you know how you're doing this.
You're low. You're low. This is down by Rooker Field, isn't it?
Your house, your property is lower, or is it, is it up above?
Up. What's the address?
Fourteen oh-
Fourteen oh eight South Hennepin.
You're, you're below the Gordon Drive, right?
No.
No, we're above.
I said above Gordon Drive.
Forty-nine oh, South Hennepin. To the south.
So then it belongs, then it goes-
Yep, yep, yep.
Then I have a bank, and then it goes into all the state property, except for my neighbor. Across the street, he owns some of that property.
So this is state property?
Yes, this belongs to the state.
How come you haven't went to the state? Why haven't you went to the state?
Because the state tells me because of the storm drains, it's the city's responsibility.
Can you sharpen that up a little bit? Can you sharpen that up a little bit?
Sharpen it?
Clerk.
Uh, that's about as good as it's-
Is that as about as good as it gets?
Oh, is it?
Oh, that's worse.
What's across Gordon Drive, directly?
Conys used cars. Conys used cars.
That's what I thought. You're in that driveway back up, well, I call it a driveway, but you're across from that like eight-plex building or whatever that-
Oh, okay.
You're, aren't you, you turn off Lakeport to get to your place?
Yes, you can turn off to Lakeport.
Then you turn right, right away.
And then you turn on Peters, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. And then I think there's two houses, three houses, and then there's an alley.
Yeah.
And once you come to the end of the alley, then my house comes around and goes on to-
Yep, I know where you're at now.
Has the, has the city been out there to look at the storm drains?
Yes, yes.
And, and what are they telling you?
They tell me that the rainwater is causing it, because it's crossing my property.
Causing, but did they say anything about the hole or the leak?
Oh, no. Well, they put a camera, they said, down there, but the landscaper said, well, you can put a camera there, but if there's a small enough leak, and it's taken two years to sink it, then they can't see that. So, because he said you have to dig down first to find out the problem. He said, so I, he said I can fill it many a times, but it's going to keep sinking, because either the, the pipe is leaking, or it's all the debris that's in the bottom of the berm. Because you can see concrete blocks and stuff that, I mean, because it goes straight on down, you can see it. So.
John Ryan, utility superintendent, we have multiple videos of this storm line, and there's nothing wrong with the storm line. There's no voids, no crack. It looks like, just because the day it was put in, because it's never been eroded by salt. It is a corrugated steel pipe that's in there, so.
I, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
It's a corrugated steel pipe that's in there, and it's not rusted. It looks like the day it got put in, we have multiple videos of that section of pipe.
So where's the water coming from?
It's erosion. That's causing it.
You doubt it's a leak in the pipe, it's-
I, we have video approved that the pipe's in pristine shape.
The ground around it or-
Ground around it, it has nothing to do with our storm system at all.
And it has nothing to do with me either.
Thanks, John.
You know, I have, I mean, I can't stop the rainwater, so. And if you, if you were to drive on Gordon Drive and look up at the, the bank, the bank is all eroding away. The tree roots are hanging, the dirt's all gone. So one of these days, that whole berm is going to fall. So.
So how come the rain off of her lot is so dramatic that it's washing out like this?
Justin Potter, civil engineer. Over the years, or, excuse me. Her lot collects the water from the streets of Clinton, and we are getting a better image shortly here. The residents of this particular area paved South Clinton without the city's knowledge some at least ten years ago, possibly more than that. We've only been made aware of it recently.
That they did what?
That they paved the street. This was a dirt street.
The asphalt has been on the alley for, way before I moved in, because the neighbor, and I'm sure the neighbor came down and had a city permit to do it, because he does nothing without being permitted. The guy's eighty-five years old, he's never done anything on his property without making sure it was good first. And the water doesn't come off South Clinton, it comes down from the other homes. But it runs down between my house and, I mean, my garage and the neighbor, his name is Tom, and it runs there.
Are you saying the, the street that you've got marked South Clinton, you-
Is an alley.
Well, he says it's an alley, but it's, I mean, it's an alley, but he says it's South Clinton.
That's been, that's been asphalt for a long time.
Yeah, I see.
So when she fixed it the last time, did we go out there to see what it looked like?
He did.
Yes, and the repairs were, was filled in.
Okay, so my question's going back pretty simple. Two years ago, she paid for it.
Yes.
You okayed it. Now we got a problem. And you're telling me it's water runoff? Well, how could that be? I'm not an engineer, but that fix should have lasted more than two years if you guys did it and oversaw it and did it the way that you wanted it done. So something's happening out here.
The previous repairs closed a drain. I'm going to move the mouse. That was approximately in this location that ran water out through here and made no other drainage improvements to the site. We do not direct how the homeowner, their contractor, their means and methods of making the repairs and investigating the causes and following up with what the final work is. That they have investigated the whole site fully, that they are confident that this will not occur again. That is not the city's responsibility. That is responsibility.
Well, it seems to me it should be because, I mean, why would you write off and write something off and saying that it's done right? If it's not done right, because it's obvious it wasn't done right two years ago.
Well, he's saying it's the responsibility of the person you hire to make sure the fix that they put in place is not only treating the problem that exists, but also the causation of the problem.
And he did. Um, because we had Justin and Tom, I think it was Tom, the state guy, the DOT guy, and they both, they were kind of working along with Jeremiah the whole time. He was doing everything and they kept saying, yeah, it's looking good. He said, I made sure I did the, the grade level so that the water would go or whatever and it would not, you know, sit and sink in that sinkhole. And so they came out when it was all done and Justin's, or Ja, Jeremiah said, so, is it good? They're like, yeah, everything looks wonderful. And then off they went.
Who was in charge of it for the city two years ago?
I was.
Who was that?
You were?
No.
Yeah, you were, and then Glen Ellis.
And Glen Ellis.
Glen Ellis, I'm sorry, I knew that too.
And, and you, it was graded to run away?
We, the void area, which is slightly different from where it is currently. Uh, if you see the, if you can see this break in the trees, that's more or less where the void was previously. And the work we inspected was the filling in of that void.
And the packing, and he packed it so tight. It was, he just, you know, he packed it and packed it and packed it. So it, it shouldn't have been two years and then starting to sink again.
This is probably really.
Would be like you need another inlet right there.
That's what the other landscaper said too, that they need another.
Okay, so here, here's my question, and I know nothing about any of those, but you're telling me. This is a wild guess. Could water be coming up from underneath?
Well, that's why we keep thinking it's the, the drain or the pipe between the two storm drains that's causing. I mean, because it, it's really weird to watch it because the, the dirt just kind of starts to kind of like move a little bit.
So it's not coming from the top, it's coming from the bottom? That's what I'm asking.
Well, it, it just starts to kind of move a little bit and then it just sinks the dirt right to the bottom. You know, so then everything, and then it starts to cave the rest of the dirt on the sides. So, yeah, then it ju, I mean, you can just stand there and just watch it just, you know, go down to the bottom of the berm.
So it's not going to matter how many times that, that you fill this up, it's going to keep happening until something gets fixed.
It's going to keep happening until they investigate. They're telling me I need to investigate.
And for another five thousand dollars every time, I mean, I.
No, yes.
No way.
Yes, yeah, no.
Ron, I think the, the issue is, is that the, yeah, if, if they don't solve the root cause of the problem, it'll keep happening.
It'll keep happening, yes.
Essentially, the problem moved westward down the street. You know, they, they, they compacted, filled the hole, and now it, now the erosion ate out a further place down the hole. Until they stop.
Well, that would lead me to believe you got a leak in the pipe.
That's right.
I'm sorry, but that would lead me to, you, you can't, it cannot be water from the top, guys, come on.
All I can.
You've got trees that are stable and holding a bank.
All I can tell you is our TV reports, we have multiple TVs, there's nothing wrong with that pipe.
Well, you've got something else going on there.
I can tell you what my beliefs are of happening.
Well, tell me, because I know.
Getting a hole by either a rodent or a tree rut. You have water coming off that roof, water coming down from her garage is making, is punching that hole through the bank. You have a, what do you say, twelve, fifteen foot drop between where that abatement is and Gordon Drive. Our soil conditions, you.
Later, this is garage, water off a garage doesn't cause this. There's all kinds of other drains that she's not responsible for. And you're asking her to be responsible for.
If that's going into our storm system, we'd have indications of dirt in our storm.
You need another inlet is what you need. She can't be responsible for all of her neighbor's water. That's unrealistic. So I'm not ready to vote today until I drive out here because I'm, if you've got gutters on, she's done what she's supposed to do.
Got no gutters.
Okay, well, she should put some gutters on.
Those are, yes, those are, as soon as I get my new roof after our storm, yes, the gutters are going on.
Did you recommend gutters the last time?
No, I did not.
The one thing about gutters, though, it's going to point it all in one direction.
No, 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 because I got, now I got rain barrels. So I'm better at rain barrel.
You have a lot of rain barrels.
I have two huge rain barrels.
I guess the issue for me, John, is, and Justin, you issue a notice to abate the nuisance for failure to provide adequate surface drainage.
You're downstream.
So
she doesn't have.
What, in your opinion, would be, would be necessary to provide that adequate surface drainage? Is it because, is this water problem because there are no gutters? Is it because the landscaping directs all the water from her property to this particular area? What, why did you, what did you see that led you to believe it was inadequate? Surface drainage from her property?
Void. It's a void. I mean, you look how it's coming off the garage.
But I'm saying.
It's literally puncturing the ground and you have more water running around the garage where you have that berm set up.
So your position is?
It's directing it right to there. I mean, there's nothing. You off there, you look at the berm, how it's built up along the garage, you can see how the water's running.
So, so the, the void is the result of the water coming off the roof of her garage?
I think it's a combination of both.
In your opinion?
In my opinion, it's a combination of that and the runoff from the road.
And why was the gutter not a part of the solution before?
I wasn't.
Yeah, no, I know. We, we didn't provide a solution. We gave her the, the issue. Hire a company to do it. Yep, she's got to find this.
Now, wait a minute, you guys were there. Come on, we've got, I, I don't like it when we, when we're there and we don't offer, we offer.
Because then we take responsibility for it.
But you also gave, you also worked with her person.
Well, I, I.
And it looks to me like you're blaming all this water, but the void is outside of her property line. So if the void's outside of her property line, just what Nicole said, I agree, I got to take my neighbor's water and the downstream's got to take my water. Well, you got to take her water too. You're not exempt from taking water.
But the void, the void, from my understanding, is on, on her property and on the state property.
Yes.
But before, it looks like what he just said, fixing it, was, was north of, northeast of the void sign, which means she fixed that outside of her property line.
The cause, the.
I, I don't care about the cause. She fixed that void outside of her property line. You can tell me what the cause is, guess what? It's from water above. It happened, we're in a hilly city here. Right?
Yes.
And she fixed a void in your property.
In the DOT right of way, yes.
Well, it's, it's yours or our, or theirs, but it's.
It's ours to maintain.
Okay. You've got some responsibility to accept her water. Do you not? You build a berm so it doesn't run over the side, so you have built a natural blockage of the flow of water. So if you're going to do that, you should probably put an inlet in there.
And we do have inlets through here.
Well, it's not where the void's occurring is my point. Because you're telling me it's because of this water running down the street. Well, the water coming down the street because of this house to the, here, put your arrow there where it says encroaches upon the right of way. This, come down this way, comes down. The water can't get by there, right? The only way it can get is between those two properties. She doesn't have an option.
And it also does come through.
Okay, and it comes down there.
And that's where I think it looks like it naturally would go and would flow, but then you have the intake in two opposite areas.
As, as an engineer, Justin or John, who, how would you fix it? If you were going to fix it today, how would it be fixed so that this problem doesn't reoccur?
I would regrade the slope right there by the garage, but east troughs on the garage. I think the east troughs are the biggest part of the problem right there. It's because it's allowing the water to penetrate the ground and then you get the flow from the, the road and the roof in that area.
And you couldn't put enough water in there, in that roof, the last two years as dry as it's been, to wash that out. It's got to be a problem somewhere else. We haven't had that kind of rainstorm and you don't have that much roof there. You could, I don't have gutters on my own garage at home in the backside and I can't, you can't even tell it rained the last two years. So there's, it's, it's, there's just no way that that roof, now, one of you telling, says it's drainage off the street, another one's saying it's off the roof.
I think it's a combination of both of them. Then you get a rodent that digs a hole in the ground right there and you just have a natural funnel for the water right down to Gordon Drive.
Okay.
That's something, I mean, I can't.
But the DOT built a berm there to stop the water.
I'll correct you on that. That's correct.
Yeah.
They designed it to block the water, to keep it up top and get it in the storm system.
And you would think with two storm drains that the water should go down them storm drains, right? And of course, the city doesn't maintain any of that up there. I have done it for years until it started sinking and I'm not going to put my lawnmower next to the sinkhole. So where the storm drain is way back at the peak of the state property, it is all full of weeds because they don't maintain it. The trees, like I said, that go over my garage, they don't cut those down, I do. All the dead trees that are on the berm, they don't take care of them. The roots that are hanging on the berm, it's, I tell you, it's going to erode away and the, and that hill's going to, the, the berm's going to come down on Gordon Drive.
It hurts.
As far as the trees and maintaining that, it's the agreement through DOT that budding property owner maintains that.
No, that has never been an agreement.
That's the way DOT's ruling works.
Would you repeat that please for me?
It's my problem to re, to.
DOT, the budding property owner has to maintain the property.
Those trees are on the actual bank itself.
Well, wait a minute, if they got to maintain it, they got to go all the way out to.
I have to, I have to get on that bank.
I hope not.
Yeah, I have to get on the bank to take care of those trees.
It's no different than our, our right of way that the.
There's a huge difference. You've got a big hill there. You can't ask her that those trees are growing out over the edge. You, when that tree falls on Gordon Drive, you're telling me that that's going to be her responsibility to move that? Come on.
I'm.
I'm telling you that's not going to happen and you know it. DOT's going to be out there moving.
I'm just saying you what the policy is.
They'll, they'll get it off the roadway, yeah.
Ron Smith, fourteen oh nine, South Hennepin. The city has signed a twenty-eight E agreement with the DOT. Um, primary roads with curbs. The city shall be responsible for maintenance of all storm sewers, manholes, intakes, catch basins, and culverts used to collect and dispose surface drainage. That was paragraph three. Paragraph five, maintenance of sidewalks, retaining walls, and all areas between the curb and the right of way line. So the twenty-eight agreement that the city has with the DOT goes from the curb all the way up to the property line. And that's where we're talking, it abuts Paulus property. All this lies within the state right of way and it is a city's responsibility according to the twenty-eight E agreement. When was that signed? Uh, fifteen. Twenty fifteen? Yes. How long's it good for? It's good for five years. DOT told me that they renew that every five years so the staff is aware of their agreement. Rather, it, this could, there could be a twenty-eight agreement that precedes that of the same order.
It isn't just that property either.
Pardon?
It's not just that. That twenty-eight E agreement is not just for that property.
No, it's for all of the DOT right of way. And then the city gets to road use tax as a result of that. They also get drainage tax to take care of storm water problems. They also get property tax to take care of problems.
Well, I'm not prepared to vote today because I want to go out and look at it.
Yeah. I would feel that same way.
But I would move, is there anybody else here? But I would move to deferral for one week.
I'll second.
Well, Nicole, did you say you can bring it back to closed and talk about it, then?
No, um, you can defer, if you don't want to close the hearing, we're having the hearing today.
Oh, that's what you meant.
If you still want to take additional evidence, we would not close the hearing. You just defer, um, continual information could be presented at that time if the council had additional concerns or if they wanted to view the site in the meantime.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, in, in the meantime, could you secure a copy of the twenty-eight E agreement that Mr. Smith has?
Yes.
And then we can figure out whether or not the city has any responsibility by virtue of.
Sure, and if he would like to offer that for purposes of the hearing today, we can have that as part of the record for the council.
Would you be willing to do that, Mr. Smith? Offer a copy or? The, the. Whoops, careful.
You all right?
Twenty-eight E. Yes.
They're light on his feet.
She'll, they'll enter that in for the record, okay?
We'll enter it into the record so that.
All right.
City legal can review it and.
Well, city legal knows about it because it's something we do on a regular basis.
Paragraph three. And five, okay.
All right.
Send it into evidence.
We have a copy, right?
Yes, we should.
You do have a copy?
It's publicly filed on the Secretary of State's website and we will have a copy in our records. We'll just need to, I'll need to go back and look at it, but I can certainly take a copy of that agreement. So we have the one that you're wanting the council to consider.
Yeah, we'll copy, we'll copy and get you a copy.
Thank you.
You need the pictures too?
Sir, are the pictures that you gave the council today copies that the council can keep for purposes of their, okay, thank you.
Well, he's got.
You would like them?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, John and Justin, Mrs. Ogden.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something about the pictures that you?
Well, I wanted to explain something to her about the pictures.
Oh. Why don't you hang around after council meeting? It won't be that long and you can talk to her. How's that sound?
That sounds good.
Thank you.
I have to get back to work, otherwise they'd hang around, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
You betcha, thank you.
We would need a, a motion in a second to defer. Do we have that?
We have that.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capr?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Eighteen's an ordinance amendment. Sioux City Municipal Code by offering free parking for the first hour, the city-owned parking ramps deferred from July seventeenth and August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. First consideration passed August seventh, two thousand seventeen. Got all your questions answered?
Dave, would you be able to give us an update kind of from the meeting?
Oh.
As far as the parking?
Yeah, excuse me, um, uh, yeah, the, uh, Parking and Skywalk Board met last Wednesday. Uh, it was their recommendation unanimously that they stick with the original recommendation uh, that they had of the one hour free. They did not see the overall benefit of the three after five. They saw the one hour free as a bigger benefit for downtown office-type business, that they would get a bigger benefit from clients being able to come in, have a place to park. Uh, one of the members of the Skywalk Committee is a, manages properties downtown. He said that's their biggest complaint about getting tenants is that their clients would have to pay to come down and do business during business hours. So that, that was their recommendation to move, to continue forward with the proposed amendment that would be a six-month trial on the first hour free.
So it's where we started, right?
Yes. Yes.
Because then the other changes that Downtown Partners proposed, the Skywalk and them, they said that they agree with some of those, but it would just like through, join the CIP project or.
Yeah, we would have, we, yeah, so, you know, like the, the changes to the Heritage Ramp and the changes to Discovery will be bringing forward during the CIP process. Um, the, the, the one would be changing the meters to actually reflect, uh, because that'll also be an ordinance amendment. So we'll work with legal about bringing that forward, assuming, I guess, consensus among the council would be that we'd like to change that from, uh, eight to six to eight to five, since that's really what we're doing enforcement on.
Because that was my question, will that change now or soon, or is that?
We'll, we'll work with, we'll work with the amendment. We just wanted, we didn't want to muddy this with trying to change the.
Adding.
But we'll try, we'll, we'll work with them about what language needs to change regarding the meters being five o'clock.
Do you have anything to add, downtown?
Well, I think when I get up here, Dave gets more positive, so I just thought I'd come up and see what I could do. Just kidding. Um, yes, we did go through each of the options and David's correct. We went through each one. A lot of this will be solved via wayfinding when we do that. Um, RFQ, we'll go to the board this month, to our board of directors. Uh, so the marketing pieces and some of the other things. Um, he's right, the Parking and Skywalk Board felt in our current business environment that the first hour free or the, um, yeah, I guess say first hour free, not one hour free. It's a little bit different marketing, so I want to make sure that's clear as well. Um, is good at this point. And then once we move things forward, we get more demand, we'll take a look at it. We'll see how the six-month trial goes. And if we can get the Heritage Ramp entrances and exits, which is a separate P I, CIP, which he had mentioned. Um, and then, yes, changing the meters to be labeled for five o'clock if you're going to enforce till five, not six.
And my biggest thing, I think it goes without saying, I just want to make sure that we're monitoring, monitoring numbers and, you know, number of cars in, number of cars utilizing this, how, what the increase was to see.
Yeah, after six months, we'll, we'll look back.
Exactly.
Month to month.
And what the loss was, I mean, if we're estimating it's nineteen K or something over the course of a year, I want to see where we're on track with that, were we higher than that, lower than that, before we make our assessments.
Well, and, and, and that, that might be a little different because actually if we're saying we're higher than that, may indicate that we're having more people utilizing the ramp. So that may not necessarily be a bad thing, saying that, because we may have lost some of those parkers if we were charging for the first hour free. You may, you may have those people, let's say that use.
People coming in, so then there's.
Or, but a person utilizing the Ho-chunk Center for make, Well, and that might be a little different, because actually, if we're saying we're higher than that, may indicate that we're having more people utilizing the ramp. So that may not necessarily be a bad thing, saying that, because we may have lost some of those parkers if we were charging for the first hour free. You may, you may have those people, let's say that use.
People coming in.
Or, but a person utilizing the Ho-Chunk Center for make, parked on the street, but now that they can get a first hour free, they parked in Heritage instead. So that's going to show up as a more lost revenue, but it's actually a good thing because we'll have more tickets pulled. So it's, we're really going to look, focus on the number of tickets pulled and utilize and really the revenues. And hopefully, we'll get some of those, we'll drift over from one hour to two hours and we'll get some additional revenue.
That makes sense.
Or offset the lost revenue. So it'll really be looking at tickets.
Or you know what I mean?
We're going to look, we will, when we get to the end of the six months, we'll compare month to month, what we're doing.
And I would recommend doing it just off of a little bit sooner. I mean, if you're going to do a six-month end date, you know, are you taking away that free at the end of that six months versus analyzing it sooner to see if it can continue?
Yeah.
Instead of trying to balance back and forth.
I think that makes sense, maybe halfway through, start at the three-month mark.
Start analyzing sooner.
So the criteria you will use is the number of pulled tickets?
Yeah, we'll be looking at the number of pulled tickets, exactly.
I'll move the item.
For our transient parkers, because it won't.
Sure, second.
And I mean, there's a lot of discussion that we've heard as far as monthly parkers. Understand, monthly parkers only pay, they pay less than $2 a day, assuming that they're down here for every business day. So it'd be hard to give them any more of a.
Break.
Break, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Well, I think by all the increased sales in downtown Sioux City, the sales tax will more than offset this, so I think it's going to be worth it.
Actually optimistic. You don't hear that one.
Just saying. Just saying. Do we have a motion and second?
Yes.
We'll call the roll.
Waters?
Aye.
Capr?
No.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Just curious, Rhonda, why you're voting no? What?
Well, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. You know, I, in order to get people down there in those ramps, you have to have business going on. And for me, you know, right now, they're talking about these businesses wanting to get, you know, give them a free hour. Well, the free hour is not going to do any good if you don't have people down there in the first place. That's where I'm at.
I would agree with you 100%, but I'm, I'm going to vote yes, just because.
Yeah, and I would vote yes, I am voting yes, on the belief that we will, they will accomplish what they hope they will accomplish by getting more cars off the street, which would go, and that is to increase activity in the downtown area. Maybe even encourage people to want to get into a business down there. So I would hope that might be the case and maybe there are things the city can do to incentivize them in the long run. I would like to see that, but.
Well, and it sounds like we're trying something, right?
Yes.
Trying to move forward to incentivize something. I, I don't like the mentality of, well, let's just keep doing what we're doing and we're lost. And it doesn't pan out, we don't see an increase, fine, let's take what that lost revenue would have been and look at incentivizing in other ways. I just don't want to sit back on our laurels and just pray that downtown is advancing. You know what I mean? I think it's time we tried something new. And so that's why I think it's a six-month trial when we're looking at it halfway, hey, we'll see how it works. And if we're talking, if the Skywalk Board said no, they're looking at.
Okay, but then they better get on all this other stuff, like way signs and all that stuff that that report said.
I agree.
That we have sit on, you know, I voted against that report because why? Because we're going to sit on it and not do anything. And exactly what I said has happened.
But I would charge then, whose fault is that?
I went down, not mine, that's these guys out here, not mine. Because I ask about it every time they come here.
I would say the city council is the leadership that drives that.
Well, there's only.
You're working on that, Dave, you're working on it.
You know, I went to Des Moines this week to go to meetings, parking ramps were full. You know why? They got offices downtown with a lot of people in.
Yep.
Parking for miles, you can't see it. And guess what? I go by a parking ramp and it's, from that floor to that ceiling, it says parking. I knew I could park there.
And I think those are all things we're working on, I mean, that's.
I understand that, Alex, but we've had a blue universal parking sign, seems to me, in four years since the Brooks Report?
How many years ago did Brooks report?
Last year.
I was going to say.
Yeah, it was more than that.
One or two, between one and two, isn't it?
No.
Three.
So this is what, two?
Three.
Who did, who was the guy that we, the only thing we found on that report is Sandwich Board signed. That's all that came of that report so far. No standardization, who was that guy? The guy that showed us pictures from Colorado and all that? Who was that?
The gentleman that did our action plan was Brad Siegel with Puma and he was here in March of 2016. And then Roger Brooks came in in April.
Okay, March of 2016.
Yep.
I rest my case. That Brooks Report was excellent. I never felt like a study ever was worth anything around here but that one. And I wish we'd dust it off and go to work on it. And I'm not just saying Downtown Partners, some of it's our stuff too.
Yeah.
You know, by now, we were supposed to have, we were supposed to have diagonal parking in front of Security Bank. Stop me when I'm wrong. With some flower plots and some benches out there. We did that little mini park thing over there by Coney Island. And that, by Security Bank was going to be our first one, where we diagonal park and put some flower pots in and. You don't remember that, Dave?
That was before I got here.
We're getting to work on that, Mayor.
No, we're not, Dan. No, we're not, but I'm going to move third reading so we can get out of here today.
Second.
I'm sorry.
I said aye.
Yeah.
Yes, but I believe that I need to call and vote. Greckin?
No, we already voted.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, we took.
Yes, we did, because Rhonda voted, I asked her why.
Rhonda voted no.
Yes, while Alex started it, you called my name and I said why?
I didn't, I did not do it.
You did?
I'm not sure.
You did?
Yeah, I think there's a four to one vote, yes.
Because we had the four votes taken and the mayor said, Rhonda, I'm curious as to why you voted no.
After you called my name. I'm not.
But I didn't hear the mayor.
Call again if you.
I'll listen to the recordings, but I'm pretty sure.
Well, call it again if you'd feel better.
Start with Alex, though.
We've already said it all now. Greckin?
Aye.
That's where it ended, I swear.
Don't worry, Lisa, we got you.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Yes, you did. I'll move third reading and I'll take 50 bucks on that. You want that?
Second.
You want that?
I'll take 10.
I'll take 10.
Okay.
I'll come down tomorrow to pick it up.
I'm sorry.
All right, we have a third, please.
Waters?
No, he, okay.
Capr?
He went first last time.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Downtown Partners Quarterly Update.
Well, isn't this timely?
Dave Reagan, before you get started, before you get started, do you have a synopsis or summary of what Roger Brooks said a year and a half ago?
Actually, I still, sent you the whole report, it's also on our website. Yeah, we have, I just do a little check mark of the things that.
Thank you.
You betcha. If I can get the screen, Lisa.
But you are working, you are working on the signs.
You betcha. Also in here, you guys, okay, hold on, one sec.
Okay, okay.
Taking away the wow fact, no, I'm just kidding, it's the same report we usually do and we kept in some slides, but there are a lot of changes, so bear with me, I will talk fast. If you want to time me, I should be under 10 minutes. But our Board of Directors changes on July 1 of every year. We do ballots in May and the community here in the property owners select the next board members. The newest of which is Julie Shaner with Soho Kitchen and Bar. She's going to be joining the board. We do lose Ben Knefler with Knefler Chevrolet. He served two, three-year terms, so he's been with us for six years. But Julie joined us on July 1 and she's been full of ideas so far, if anybody knows Julie. It's been wonderful. Dennis Johnson has moved into the president role, he's with Ho-Chunk Capital. Jennifer Rose Bass with Century 21 is now our vice president. And Mark Hines remains our accountant on the board and is our treasurer. The other piece we had is we lost our Business and Entrepreneur Support Coordinator on August 3 to a position that, quite frankly, she probably couldn't pass up. I don't know if she should have. So we are out hiring now and have a potential candidate already, so hopefully get her started by the 1st of September. So we're moving along with that and that position, just to remind you, is solely focused on business and getting out and reaching out to the businesses.
You said that you expect to hire when?
Hope to hire in, next week. So it'll go to the board on Thursday, I'll get that.
Great.
SMID renewal for 2018, just reminding you of the timeline, I won't go through too many of the details unless, of course, you have questions. But in September, October, we will continue stakeholder meetings. We get our Board of Directors out there on different calls and things and like that. With some things, we've been a little backed up, but by September, October, we should be ready for SMID renewal results to the Planning and Zoning Commission in November, which means SMID renewal will come to you in December. So that's just an update on the timeline. Our next SMID renewal date would start July 1 of next year.
And as you know, the stakeholder meetings are really important.
They're very important and not only are they important, it's a great opportunity for our board to go out with me and hear some of the things, not concerns, some concerns, but some, hey, this is going well for us, we're thinking of doing this, what are your thoughts? It's just really a great discussion. We usually, on average, spend about an hour and a half with some of them. It's just a good touch base, we do it all the time, but that provides us the opportunity to really say, next five years, think big. What do you want to do? So it's a great opportunity. We'll be sharing with them the financials for the SMID since 2013. I shared those with you here, I tried to put it in as simple a form as I could find. We had some unrestricted reserve that we were able to utilize on some bigger projects, like the trolley and things like that, before the assessments started increasing mainly due to the Hard Rocks assessment that came in in fiscal year 17. Fiscal year 18, we're starting July 1, it looks the same as 2017, so assessments are about, they're at the same line. We're working with the $344,000 budget. The Iowa Downtown Conference, I did give you a brief update last time, but I just wanted to reiterate and got some more numbers for you, that it was a very positive conference for Sioux City. 83 of the attendees, which I don't have up here because I just got the numbers before I came in from their surveys at the end of the conference, 83% described Sioux City as excellent. So I think that's a kudos to not only city staff for helping clean the streets and make things pretty, but also to our businesses. You'll see up here that we printed $2,000 in vouchers. That means a $10 voucher for each attendee and 15, 60 have been returned so far. That's a 78% return, which means all of those attendees went out to spend money in our downtown businesses. That's a big deal, that's a big return and it's nice going able, maybe to go out and have them talk about the conference and what their experiences were. There were seven tours in our downtown, those are highlighted here. And then Brad Siegel, the Puma presentation, he was the one that did our action plan right around the same time as Roger Brooks, you'll recall that timeframe. The Sioux City case study was actually included in his presentation, I was able to present with him and let them know what we've done with his action planning process and for other downtowns to kind of get after that presentation as well, which is great. The next big thing we have coming up, we received a Gilcrest grant for $25,000 specifically to do art murals on buildings in downtown Sioux City. The first artist we have is Jenna Brownlee, she's out of Des Moines. You might have recognized some of her things, those big round globes, they're about three-foot globes on the street that say DSM on them and things like that, if you're just in Des Moines. She does some art murals and she'll be working on the, so Fourth and Court, it'll take up the entire wall from the front of their building to the back along Court. She'll start here early September, should be wrapped up with both of these by the end of October. So it's going to be very quick, the next time I come to you, it'll be posted, yes.
And one thing, I know I talked with you a little bit about this, Reagan, but I would just emphasize again, is to think about the other side of their building and in the, almost the Alph's parking lot side of it.
Yep.
Just because there are the trees, the run-along Court, and I think a lot of it would be blocked. And I talked with Vernon a little bit about that side and I think he has plans for possibly outdoor seating that would wrap around and so it can really incorporate into the mural.
You bet.
I would just really focus on where you're going to be able to see. And then it's also on the side where the hotel's going to be and the outlet from the interstate. I mean, I think there are a lot of advantages to maybe being on that side of the building rather than the Court Street.
Yes, and when we selected the building, we take screenshots at every angle, so you start to look at the visibility on how much of it can be visible and from how many vantage points. And that side of the building just does lend itself to being the core and kind of the center of Historic Fourth. And so the vantage points for that just kind of outweighed the other side. And after you mentioned that, I did go down and talk to Vernon, we talked through that side of the wall. There is some damage on the upper corners. It's, it reminded me a lot of the one that the Francis Canteen mural is on and how we have those issues with plaster falling down on the side. He's got that same coverage on that side of the wall, which scares me just enough to think, are we going to be maintaining this three years from now and things falling? So we've got some structural things, I think, to look at on that side of the building, but yeah, outdoor seating would be wonderful. We also looked at the back, but I think that lends itself for him to get better, kind of a signage, almost like an art-type signage that he could do in the back of the building. Structurally, it's been redone and painted currently, so that would be great to have the signage as you're coming in off Fifth and Sixth, even into that corridor, to get signage on that side of the building. So those are the things he and I kind of walked through and went through some of the other pieces that he had questions on, so. It, it looks to be very positive for them. We are not removing any trees, I've also had that rumor that we're going to remove the two trees.
Because it was blocking a big part of that wall.
Yep, no, we're going to incorporate it because it's Iowa and in the winter, those leaves will fall and we'll have a blank space. So to incorporate the design behind the trees will be something that she needs to take into consideration when she does design. The other artist is Martin Ron, he's actually from Argentina. When we looked through the list of muralists, they were national and international. And Martin Ron was a great 3D artist. He'll be taking the wall on what is now owned by Guzman Law Firm. And I'm going to clarify, it's not the I Heart Sioux City side of the law firm building, on the Lurch Building. It's actually, they purchased the Cobbler's Bench, which is on 501 Douglas, the corner of Fifth and Douglas, and it'll be the wall facing Fifth Street. So as you're coming in off Wesley Way on Fifth, that wall is very visible off to your left. So that's the other building that we'll be doing with this project. Again, both should be completed by the end of October.
So who decides what to put on the wall?
It's a combination of city staff over in the Historic Fourth District, it'll be Historic Preservation Commission, mainly the property owner, artists and Downtown Partners. We will all be kind of approving that before they just go forward with a bunch of paintings. We'll be approving design.
I hope it's really fun and not something just, oh, like a pretty tree, you know? I hope it has some meaning.
If we're doing this, I want it to be timeless.
Oh, God.
What did you say?
I said, I hope it's better than music notes.
You know, and as we go through design.
Rhonda, that's what I was going to say.
And as we go through design, I'm happy to forward you on designs via email and just check them out and see what you think and if you have any input, we've got a little bit of time for that. This is my Roger Brooks list, I update it every time we come up here, because Roger Brooks gets brought up a lot. Our ongoing checklist, update wayfinding. Like I said, on Thursday's board meeting, the board will approve, we took over, I shouldn't say took over, but we now are managing the RFQ that will go out for design to get things rolling. That we hope that will go out to our board Thursday and then start September 1. Looking for firms, we've included city staff and several other people in the process of selecting those firms, which would happen then on schedule end of September.
Don't leave there now, let's go down the list.
Well, you had that look, that smile, like I should stop.
How are we doing on broken grate, tree grates?
Broken tree grates, actually, we took out 73 tree grates this year and we replaced them with porous pavement. You'll see it in the Historic Fourth District down Virginia and then we were going to move into the Promenade space. We still have materials for those, but during construction, we are holding off. It has to be a warmer climate for those to be installed. Basically, the porous pavement weeds at the center of the tree that start coming up, but you can pull those a lot easier and no cigarette butts in the, in the grates. They look cleaner and they're better maintainable with those trees. How to get those out, then they pop out and every three or five years, we go through and we just kind of heat them again and repack them. So really a better investment than those tree grates, which we've had a lot of trouble getting trash out of. So 73 of those and we will plan again for another chunk, hopefully through, our funding will pay for another chunk of trees. We'll just keep going through Fourth and all the way down to the other end until we get them all.
Blade signs?
Blade signs, we've talked to all the sign companies. At one point, we were hearing from businesses that when they ordered signs, they were not being offered the blade sign option, the projecting signage. They were saying when they approached the sign companies that they said they're not allowed downtown, which, so there was a miscommunication there, there was, basically, they weren't aware of whatever code it was that passed that allowed them in the downtown district. So we've sent out information to them saying, we would like you to please promote projecting signage as part of their sign plan when you go and talk to a business. We've had several installed over the last year. We've had several fixed, we've had several relocated, so they are looking more prominent, much more than they have in the past. The Sandwich Boards were a part of that, that was before Roger Brooks even came on. That was part of something that we wanted changed. The light bulbs were all LEDs, worked with city staff, those have all been installed on the historic light posts. Evening hour events and that mall mentality, we are working, and I'll go through it a little later and briefly, we're working with the Chamber on their Small Business Series, we will be promoting the storefront 101. Within that, I don't know if you got a copy of it last time, I believe you did, but I'll refresh your memory here. That's outdoor cafes, that's 101010, in other words, don't be afraid of competing businesses. And when I say competing, there should be three boutiques in a four-block radius, that's how women shop. We don't want to get in our cars and go to another boutique across town. We want it all together, we want to walk, we want drinks, we want to eat, we want to shop. You want to do it all together in one. So getting that mentality and also that storefront design, having them bring things out, you know, take a picture of your storefront right now, would you, as a visitor, if you were in a town, feel comfortable walking into that store or be attracted to that store? Start thinking of that type of mentality when you're looking at window front design and also what you put out front, a pot, a flag, you know, things like that that just make it more inviting. We think of it as our, kind of your front porch at your home, you might put out chairs and pots and you make it look good, it's got good curb appeal. It's got good curb appeal. Maybe no one ever sits in those chairs. You sit on the back deck, but it's curb appeal. It looks appealing. To think in that frame of mind, I think is just something that just needs to be reiterated and then how they need help with that. So those are the program green spaces is another checkmark with, and I'm going through these kind of quickly. But waiting for Pearl Street Park, we're looking at lighting projects that will line Fourth Street from Historic Fourth to Pearl and then up to Pearl Street Park. Lighting makes people feel more comfortable. We also work with food trucks and a lot of different things and small concert, even buskers that can do things in those program green spaces.
What's it, go back to that program green spaces. What, what is that?
That's tough. That's saying there should be something happening in those parks, whether it's an artist that just sits there and paints on a Saturday or whether it's a programmed event like a Downtown Live or Fridays on the Promenade, something that programs that space that people can come enjoy themselves with. I know Ann and I were currently on a Roger Brooks webinar where we were both listening and they even have one piece where an artist came in and did an outline along a wall. And then throughout the year, kids, adults can come and paint. It's like a paint by number, something to do with family and visitors and friends, just things to activate the space so it doesn't sit. Even with issues like vagrancy, once you have foot traffic and you have lighting and you have things going on, that tends to fall back. They like to, you know, the different spots in town, they keep moving. And so that's what we want with the program green spaces. So that Pearl Street Park is a great opportunity to, to really drive home that point that it needs to be programmed.
I would really continue utilizing the museum space as well. I think that Downtown Live has done really well down there.
It was beautiful.
People liked that green space. So I, and I said that when we met with the museum board is that continue finding programming for that because I think it's, it's really been successful.
And that absolutely falls under this checkmark. I use Pearl Street Park as an example, but that museum green space is in the core of downtown. When it's busy, people driving through see that and that's very noticeable.
That's why I, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I just don't think we've utilized it fully. I mean Downtown Live is the first time that I'm driving downtown and I'm seeing a lot of action there, so.
I agree. It took some, some work to get the game plan and get them comfortable, but it's working beautifully. I think it should be utilized much more.
Sorry, what were you going to say, Bob?
Yeah.
I just don't understand why we don't, you know, it seems like we can close the street off and do reasonably well. And I don't understand why we don't move the Farmer's Market to Fourth Street.
They love to hear you say that. That is one of their main goals. They are...
I don't, what, what difference does it make if we close off two blocks of downtown Sioux City?
It went, it's active.
I'm with you. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I've, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why that's even a problem. It should be in front of that hotel and it should be over in front of the museum in those two blocks every Saturday morning. Back the trucks up onto the north side, people could walk on the south side. You'd have plenty of room to move around.
They could park around. I agree.
You can walk to restaurants. It leads to more...
It creates activity.
I thought they were resistant to that because I've suggested that a long time ago to Roger and Lou.
They are resistant to that for several reasons and we can certainly start the conversation again. I know they've wanted the covered structure for years and, and different things like that, but with things like the riverfront and Farmer's Market, those types of activity that bring people down also spurs business development. Then businesses are growing in that area because there is the foot traffic. It's a really great compliment.
I agree. It'll cause more people to want to walk downtown to see what else is there and what's going on.
And it makes them more comfortable. Next time they come down, they're figuring out where to park. They know what they're doing, they know where they're going and it's...
Well, hey, Tratura can make omelets right there on their patio.
Yes. They don't even need a tent with no signage.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask the 101010 again? I knew it was retail restaurants. What was the third 10?
It's retail restaurants and you put me on the spot here.
Yeah, I, I've been trying to think of that.
Entertainment.
Entertainment. And then I know that...
I think those are the three, where within a 10-litner block, there should be 10 different restaurants, there should be 10 different places and things to do that are complimentary.
And then wasn't there some kind of 7872, like, like 70% of the women by...
70% is...
Or 70% of them shop after 6 o'clock and 80% of the shopping is done by women and...
You're coming on to it right now.
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Sorry.
Well, and those numbers are really sticking out in people's minds because they make the most sense. Once you start looking through the numbers, you're realizing, okay, we're not that different. But our perceptions and our environments are not conducive to it. So what are the things we can do? 70% of all consumer retailing happens after 7:00 PM. That's including online.
And first of all, all these businesses have to stay open after 6:00. That's the problem we have.
And a lot of it is staffing. You know, some of these are mom and pop shops. You can't expect one person to work from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I mean, you've got to staff it and if you're not seeing the foot traffic, you're not seeing the value. So you've got to create the environment where there is going to be foot traffic and things like those events and things happening, then they start seeing the value in staying open later. Some of them, and especially it doesn't work if just one business in a block does it. You need everybody to participate and it's not going to be in one week. It's going to be in one summer. It's going to be in one year. It's hard to get the mentality, it just doesn't happen overnight and say, oh, well, it didn't work last Thursday, I'm not doing it again. There's too many factors.
Inter Monday nights on Fourth Street.
Yes, and, and open on Mondays. But even some of those that have like eight to five hours, what if you shifted it to 10 to 7:00? You know, it's the same hours, but do you really have anybody coming in from 8:00 to 10:00 that you wouldn't sacrifice those hours to just shift into a later timeframe? You know, those are options that, that could work for some of them. It's just understanding each, each one of them is so different. But this piece is what I wanted to highlight that we'll be doing with the Chamber. That's what we'll be starting their series. I will be presenting this for them on August 30th as a start to their small business series where we'll be sharing all of the Roger Brooks pieces. Like I said, I've been attending all the free webinars from him on follow-ups and things and information to share. Basically, we're just getting the information out there and relating it to Sioux City. The last slide I have for you here is just an update, just to make sure you know what's going on for some of these events. Art Splash Labor Day Weekend, also Labor Day's Festival down on Historic Fourth, happens Labor Day Weekend. The Iowa Tourism Conference is in October. This week is the last week for Food Truck Fridays for the summer, so FYI. They usually come back for us for Fall Fest and other specific events, but this is technically the last Friday of the season. Farmer's Market open till the end of October and then this Saturday is going to be a very big night. We've got a lot of downtown bars and restaurants ready for this one. Alanis Morissette and Toby Keith are on Saturday night, one at the Tyson and one at the Hard Rock. So working with the Tyson, they'll provide transportation from the ramps and shuttles to get to shows and get them around as well as our trolley will be out. The other new piece we have this year is Historic Fourth Street is Taking Over Oktoberfest. Sent year after year and make it annual and make it bigger and make it better. So they're doing quite a bit down there. They're coming together more.
Oh, my gosh. You're putting me on overload tonight, Mayor.
You guys are out and I don't have more.
Reagan, fabulous report. Would you please introduce some of the directors that are here because it's nice that they're here representing Downtown Partners as well and as well as recognizing all the hard work Ann does for the Downtown Partners Board.
I agree. Our liaison for the city, Ann Westra, she is wonderful, but you all know that. Terry Glade is here from CMBA. He actually highlights our environment work group. He chairs that one. That's the one where you'll see greenery, livability, walkability. So Terry Glade with CMBA Architects. Chris Jackson with Security National Bank and also our Sioux City Go representative, been a great addition to the board. I think on one of these presentations, you actually heard his Love Downtown piece. Those will be coming out in the next few weeks, by the way. Unlike anybody I'm missing back here. Now Julie was here and she left. Jennifer was here and she had to take off. And then of course, our esteemed representation from council, Dan Moore and Alex Waters.
What were those names again?
Um, I think it says Alex and Dan.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet. We've had, this has been a great summer. There have been a lot of things. Downtown Live, the Farmer's, everything, there's been so much more foot traffic. We've doubled our events and it's working.
You got through your whole report though without mentioning, what is that we talk about from time to time on the streets?
Art.
Two-way?
I'm not going there.
Why? Anyway, we need to revisit that sometime. Well, I, I don't think, I'm not done with it.
Yeah. Two-way street conversion.
Oh, two-way street.
Thank you.
Two-way street.
We need to go back...
Thanks, Reagan.
We need to go back to item 19 and start over with waiving the rules for the third reading and I'll move that.
Second.
We're just waiving the rules?
Just waiving the rules.
Yeah.
Not waive the rules to do the third reading.
Yeah, we're just waiving.
We did vote twice on the other one, but we only, you know...
Okay. Yeah.
Gretchen?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
So now should we do third again?
Yes.
I'll move third again.
Second.
Gretchen?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I guess aye.
Aye?
Or my, well, what, are we voting on the, the one that I voted no?
Just vote no.
No.
All right. Citizen Concerns, anybody in the audience?
Can I just ask for clarification? When will, since you did third reading tonight, when will this go into effect for the rate change?
I believe it was upon publication, which will be Saturday, but let me verify the...
What? You have effective date?
The effective date for First Hour Free.
But can you get that programmed?
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need to get that programmed. I, I was expecting that we were going to have...
No, I thought there was a start date.
I just need to double check the reservation.
Originally was a start date of September 1, but...
Oh, was it? Okay.
You need some, you need some lead time then.
The way that the ordinance is currently written is it's in effect after its final passage and publication, which would be Saturday.
I would move that deferral until, you have it done by September 15?
By when?
About September 1st.
No, we already missed that. Oh, no, no, September...
September...
It was supposed to be August, excuse me, it was supposed to be August 1st.
I know it's 5:30, Dave, but come on, buddy.
Um, yeah, I, yeah, I'll say September 15th.
Okay. Yeah, I'll move that we defer until September 15th.
Thanks for bringing that up.
I'm sorry, both the second and the third reading on the, you're talking about the municipal parking ramp rate change.
Right. You can't get it changed, the computers.
We would need a motion for reconsideration to open up the discussion and then it can be changed.
Okay, I'll move that we opened reconsideration. Just don't publish it right away.
You know, I should have just voted yes.
We could wait on the publication past Saturday if that's the direction of the council.
Yeah, just wait on the publication. That way it gives them time.
Want me to change my vote?
I'll, I'll get ABM to get me a data before we can edit it.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Joyce Downing, three vote, but my lawyer said that it's our conference...
It passed.
It passed. And I, I want to take this opportunity to thank you all because this has been a long seven years for me. And I thank you for taking the time.
No problem.
And I finally can end it and start a new life.
All right.
So thank you.
Good luck.
And I know a lot of you were...
Thank you.
But thanks for ending it.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Mr. Gretchen?
No, I don't have anything else. Thank you. I want to thank Director Steve Hansen and the Sioux City Public Museum for opening up the facility and having sunshades ready for the eclipse today. It, it was really good. It really was on the, on the plaza down there. There's, there's a good turnout, a lot of people. And the eclipse, I'm telling you, the eclipse today was not only historical, but in many ways, it's a miracle and it's just plain awesome. So I want to thank the Sioux City Public Museum for making part of that event successful and, and happen. That's all I have.
I move adjourned.
Second.
Capri?
Why is it a miracle?
Aye.
More?
Eclipse?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Happens all over the world every, like, yes, it does. Read it.
I may read that.
It just shows you.
No, you, you don't know. We don't see it.
No, you don't know. We don't see it.